Good morning and welcome. I'm Arastelli Cruz, Calbright's Marketing Manager. Today, I'd like to welcome you to our Board of Trustees meeting on May 18th, 2020. Please follow along with our agenda on Board Doc, linked on calbright.org under About, and on our Board of Trustees page. A few housekeeping notes for attendees who wish to make public comments. We have three ways you're able to address the board. Email your public comment to board@calbright.org. Use the Q&amp;A feature in Zoom to leave your comment, and I'll read it into record for the board. Or three, use the Q&amp;A feature to request public comment over audio. Please include your name, organization, and which item you'd like to speak on. Then use the raise your hand feature to be called upon. If you're connected on your phone, please dial *9 to raise your hand if you'd like to make public comments. You'll then be unmuted and called upon to address the board for three minutes at the appropriate time. A reminder, this board meeting is being recorded. And with that, I'd like to introduce our Board of Trustees President, Tom Epstein.
Morning, everyone. We will start by calling the roll.
Sorry about that. Hildegard Aguinaldo? Okay, I see you, Hildegard. You're on mute. Darius Anderson? Felicia Escobar-Carrillo? Amy Costa? Colm Fitzgerald? Okay, I see you, Colm. Tom Epstein?
Here.
Pam Haines? Kevin Hall? Julina Grande?
Here.
Jennifer Perry?
Here.
Kim Perigo? Bill Rawlings?
Here.
Valerie Lynn Shaw?
Here.
Alma Salazar? Blas Villa Lovos? And Alexis Aragosa? Okay.
Did we have a quorum? I didn't hear very many people respond.
We have nine.
Okay. I didn't hear who responded. I'll ask, I guess I'll just lead the pledge of allegiance, since I don't really know who's on. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Okay, I'm going to start with the President's report. First of all, I hope that everyone is online and safe and healthy. And I want to thank the staff of Calbright for being able to move forward despite these many challenges. There's been lots of progress that'll be reflected in today's meeting. And the crisis really reinforces the need for Calbright. That's direct services to students that we're able to provide, plus we've been able to give extra resources to some of the other colleges, and has served as an innovation lab. And I'm particularly delighted to see that there are colleges we're beginning to partner with that we can help other colleges, and that's terrific. Finally, I just wanted to report that we have a search for the permanent CEO in progress, and we expect to complete that process in June. And with that, I'll turn it over to the interim president/CEO.
Thank you, Tom, and members of the board. This week, the Governor's Office released its May revisions for the budget that highlights a truly unprecedented time that we find ourselves in as a state. As you know, the budget included significant recommended reductions, including a cut to Calbright College's annual budget. We, as a team, are in the process of digesting the impact of the recommended reductions and identifying the steps that we need to be taking to reassess the organization's development and streamline the operations. We expect to engage very closely with the board over the next few weeks as the college continues to navigate this new reality that we're in. During this time of statewide resource constraints, we are examining how we can also be helping the state to address acute workforce needs in areas like healthcare and mitigate negative impacts on those who have been the hardest hit by our current economic situation. Those who are experiencing unemployment, who are experiencing a reduction in hours or a loss of income, and facing the threat of other economic disruption, either from layoffs or furloughs. The May revise, I think, correctly places the focus of the state towards both handling the immediate needs of the pandemic, but also establishing the steps needed to reopen the economy and really ensuring that our public infrastructure, including our education and our workforce development systems, are able to provide the education and training that works for folks. It is focused on helping people navigate employment uncertainty, and we share in that goal of getting folks not just back to work, but into good jobs. This is really precisely what we are created to do. Our statute sets the expectation that we're going to provide responsive educational and training experiences to solve the challenges that are faced by economically disconnected individuals, and really providing that bridge into educational and career advancement. So as we see the size of the unemployment population surge, I think we're at something like 4.7 million right now, we are rapidly developing our efforts to address how we can look at our prior experience in the last recession and learn from places where we've fallen short collectively in terms of the public sector response. In past recessionary periods, we have been too slow to act, too far behind the curve. We haven't leveraged the best of what we have and used it to identify where the gaps are in the infrastructure that need to be addressed. And we have to be more focused on rapidly designing and launching solutions that overcome specifically those gaps. A lot of our efforts in past periods have been valiant, but they have been too disconnected. And again, the scale and the pace has not been what we need to solve the challenge ahead of us. Even with federal investments that can mitigate some of the specific resource challenges at different system institutions, there was still too much of the status quo that prevented us from surfacing kind of the breadth of solutions that were really required, and the problem is only bigger. It is not lost on me that campuses are dealing with the stresses of shifting to completely online instruction. They're figuring out how to continue to support, to provide the critical support services they need as they struggle with proposed budget reductions and struggle to meet the capacity needs of the state. But this is why we're in the moment where we precisely need to be spurring more innovative solutions that can help us collectively better solve those challenges. And I think we are uniquely positioned to do this, and the steps that we've taken over the past several weeks have aided us. Since we last spoke, we are doubling down on our research and development efforts. And I joke internally, we've taken the "R" in research to also mean rapid. The instructional workforce partnerships, technology, and student support functions are better synced up around improvements to the current student journey. We're better equipped to test and integrate new technologies to deliver new programs and services that are addressing some of the gaps that we're starting to see specific to this population of learners. This is being applied to new program development, and it's focused on areas of acute labor market need, and really informing how we map the skills that are built during this time into credential pathways that can be developed in collaboration with system institutions that better align us to higher-level upskilling needs in the months and in the years to come. This is about how we respond to a possibly permanently altered sectors of the economy that are going to require us to reimagine these transitions into new occupations that don't require an individual to really have to hit the reset button to start their educational journey or their career journey all over again, wasting time and resources that they typically don't have. The rapid developments that we're taking now actually position us to increase our enrollment capacity, but more importantly, for a way to support development for programs for economically displaced workers throughout the system. We'll talk today about a few short-run examples that demonstrate how the college is pivoting through accelerated partnership activities. And I really view these efforts as an early window into how we can begin to offer the kind of scaled capacity to solve some of these intractable challenges that have typically allowed people to fall through the cracks during previous downturns. We really need this collectively to be the public alternative to high-cost predatory online colleges. We will, our college will have to rally, our other system institutions will have to rally, and we'll have to collaborate around key capacity areas that are necessary to build an integrated set of skills-based credentials tightly connected to the labor market and to leverage the technology, the marketing and outreach capacities we have, and the professional development to really make a significant push. We are exploring several ways to do this. Some of the early partnership activities we'll share today reflect the beginning of opening up conversations with other system institutions and other interested partners in workforce development. We're encouraged to work with colleges who are eager to create these kinds of new solutions. I know, you know, we're still continuing to hear a lot of critics who raise this as an either-or scenario, and I can confidently say, you know, my past experience has led me to believe this is absolutely an "and" conversation. This is exactly the time when we need these kinds of robust, integrated solutions. We are also continuing to have our ear to the ground with employers in our network. As previously highlighted, I think in our last conversation, many employers have hit the pause button on hiring. They're reassessing their workforce needs as organizations. They're adapting, much as we all are, to a new remote working environment. And we're really working to move in parallel and in step with employer and industry needs as they evolve, building more of a comprehensive workforce strategy to address key aspects of the primary markets that we're working in: healthcare and information technology. And our workforce strategy is geared towards operational ways we can assess the economic conditions and rapidly deploy responsive solutions, like credentials aligned with the skills and talents of displaced workers and low-wage workers. We need to augment what assets folks come to the table with when designing the skills, training, needs that are aligned with hiring industries. And we are focused in designing that in the ways that we can understand better the current unemployed and underemployed populations in greater depth. Again, the assets and strengths they bring to the table, and how we can position ourselves to support their advancement as jobs emerge and as hiring resumes. If we don't find ways to better position these workers for success, we, I truly believe, will undermine our economic recovery, and we will be hardlining some of the plaguing inequities that we have fought as a state to overcome over the past several decades. Our college has no other focus than this workforce mission, and it allows us to stay in tune and bear fidelity to the needs of this population. We are diligently also strengthening necessary functions of the college related to governance, process, project management, staffing. We are committed to a very timely hiring of full-time faculty members, according to a process we did develop with the statewide academic senate. However, I did want to raise that we are experiencing significant delays in some of our hiring committees that has been triggered by a lack of timely appointment. I know that everybody is extraordinarily busy. We are grateful for the guidance provided by the academic senate, and we do need to move forward with hiring in a more timely way to meet the instructional needs of the college. Full-time faculty hires continue to be a top priority for Calbright, and this is a commitment that we made to you all, to the board. It is also an essential part of further strengthening the college's participatory governance with representative full-time faculty who are engaged in the work of the college, and as a better result, really understand its needs. Additionally, we're moving swiftly and diligently to advance our HR efforts, preparing for the onboarding of full-time faculty, deepening some of our organizational development, strengthening, again, our processes, our practice, and our procedures for both hiring staff and staff management, with a dedicated team of HR professionals who have extensive expertise in the community college system. And I'll close by saying, you know, finally, as we accelerate our efforts to this pivot I'm describing, aspects of the college to design better statewide needs in accordance with what our statutory mandate is, we have a number of administrative and faculty hires and adjustments that are critical to executing our day-to-day activities that the board will be considering today. These are critical hires that we view as essential to planning and executing the business and operational strategies, and that kind of reflect the response that we are positioning ourselves to deliver. So thank you so much for taking the time to be here today. I know everybody's lives are a little bit chaotic, and I apologize in advance if you see a head pop in the screen now and again through the course of this meeting. The TV is on, so hopefully the interruptions will be kept to a minimum.
Okay, thanks, Ajita. So now, we're going to move into closed session to consider a personnel matter. We don't expect this to take very long, and we will be back soon.
If I forget to mute my audio and you hear snoring, it's not me, it's my Boston Terrier.
Oh, I thought it was the husband.
Yeah. Hocking.
All right, it looks like we have most everyone.
We've resolved Kim's issue.
Kevin, unmute yourself. Mute yourself.
Me?
Yeah, you're making a lot of noise.
I'm just, I'm not making any noise.
Well, so, I hear you in LA.
All right.
Valerie, you have good ears. I could not be quieter. I'm sitting in a totally quiet room. I'm just sitting here.
So, Arastelli, did you take care of Pam? Pam was having trouble getting in as a participant.
We did. We moved her over, so she, and I'll double-check the list again and just make sure all board members are moved over.
Okay. And then, Arastelli, this is Kevin. I missed the very beginning of the first session, I just wanted to let you know that I'm here.
Great, Hillary will mark you present, and she'll take role again right now to make sure everyone's back from closed session.
Let's, and Darius is here also. Okay, looks like we got everybody. Let's go back into open session.
All righty, I'm going to go ahead and call roll, Tom. Is that okay?
Sure.
All righty. Hildegard Aguinaldo?
Here.
Darius Anderson?
Here.
Felicia Escobar-Carrillo? Amy Costa?
Here.
Colm Fitzgerald?
Here.
Tom Epstein?
Here.
Pam Haines? Okay. Kevin Hall?
Here.
Julina Grande?
Here.
Jennifer Perry?
Here.
Kim Perigo? Kim? Bill Rawlings?
Here.
Valerie Lynn Shaw?
Here.
Alma Salazar?
Here.
Blas Villa Lovos?
Here.
And Alexis Aragosa.
I think that Kim was having trouble getting in. Arastelli, could you send her a new link directly to her work email? Oh, there she is.
Yes. She should be drawing.
Okay. All right, I think we have just about everyone. We're back in session. In the closed session, we considered an executive appointment that we will discuss in the action agenda. So with that, we'll move to the consent agenda. We have the minutes from the last two board meetings and non-executive positions and appointments. Does anyone have any questions or comments they'd like to make about the consent agenda before we take a motion?
Tom, I have a question on the consent agenda. This is Amy. And I'm just wondering if Ajita or the team can speak on the non-executive hires, kind of what analysis was done around the salaries, and what districts they looked at to determine the salaries.
Yeah, I'm happy to take that. So it was difficult to find a salary for, for example, for the chief of staff position that was, because we created it as a split position rather than two positions. So in this position, we were looking for somebody both that had staff management capabilities that are needed in the organization, as well as stemming from the loss of the chief operating officer, based on the stage of the organization and our desire to be more judicious about executive-level hires. We went in this direction. And so we found positions that were benchmarked in Los Rios, in Los Angeles, in San Francisco. This candidate is in particular from the Bay Area. She's based out of Berkeley. And that is how we arrived at some salary comp. So the salary is on the higher end for a chief of staff, right, like role. And I think it's purposeful and appropriate largely because we're asking for these deeper operational skills and functions.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, do we have a motion?
Sue, moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, that's Anderson Rawlings. Okay, please call the roll. Oh, wait a minute, I should ask, are there any public comments?
We do not have any public comments at this time, President Epstein.
Okay, so please call the roll.
Hildegard Aguinaldo?
Aye.
Darius Anderson?
Aye.
Amy Costa?
Aye.
Tom Epstein?
Aye.
Pam Haines?
Aye.
Kevin Hall?
Aye.
Julina Grande?
Aye.
Jennifer Perry?
Aye.
Kim Perigo?
Aye.
Bill Rawlings?
Aye.
Valerie Lynn Shaw?
Yes.
Alma Salazar?
Aye.
Blas Villa Lovos?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item 4.1, the Chief Technology Officer Contract Extension. The Board of Trustees of Calbright is happy to announce its decision to continue its working relationship with Ari Badar-Natal as Calbright's Chief Technology Officer. Hence, the board will be considering extending the employment contract with Ari Badar-Natal. "Under California law, as the board president, I am obligated to orally announce all the monetary provisions of this agreement and the value of the same. Following my announcement of the monetary provisions of this employment agreement and the associated values, the board will vote on the agreement. The new agreement is for a three-year term and provides for an annual base salary of $270,000 each year. There is no increase to the salary under the proposed new extension. It is the same as Mr. Badar-Natal's current salary under the current agreement. There are no new monetary or non-monetary perks or additions to this contract. Membership in CalPERS and related employer contribution, as is set by statute, the provision remains the same as the current contract. Health benefits is currently offered to the administrative employee. This provision remains the same as under the current contract." So are there any board comments or questions? Are there any public comments? Okay, please call the roll.
Hildegard Aguinaldo?
Aye.
Darius Anderson?
Aye.
Amy Costa?
Aye.
Tom Epstein?
Aye.
Julina Grande?
Aye.
Pam Haines?
Aye.
Kevin Hall?
Aye.
Jennifer Perry?
Aye.
Kim Perigo?
Aye.
Bill Rawlings?
Aye.
Valerie Shaw?
Aye.
Alma Salazar?
Aye.
Blas Villa Lovos?
Aye.
Okay, member Perry, did you have something you wanted to say about this on behalf of the whole board?
I did. I wanted to thank Ari for the service that he has done for Calbright from the outset, from building the systems that he's built that have enabled us to move forward, for weathering a number of storms and being a constant, and just being an extraordinary servant, I think, to the college. And we look forward to having him continue to help shepherd the work of the college in the future.
And thank you. And that does reflect the opinion of the entire board, so thank you, Ari. So with that, we're going on to item 4.2, RFP for the Service Desk.
Thank you. Good morning, President Tal Walker-Menton, Board President Epstein, Vice President Haines. We are requesting approval of a one-year contract with Blackboard Inc., approximately $45,000 for Help Desk services. We need Help Desk services to provide our students and employees with information and support related to our software and hardware. The purpose of the Help Desk is to troubleshoot problems, provide guidance, and refer significant issues to our own CalBright IT staff so that they can be resolved quickly, that our employees can continue to do their work, and our students can continue their learning. Blackboard Inc. was the lowest bidder for the scope of work being sought in the RFP we released. They currently provide Help Desk services for two other community college districts, three state universities, and a number of private higher education institutions in California. Blackboard's service will be up to, will provide services for up to 2,000 incidents annually. And as I mentioned, the contract is for $45,000 for one year with an option to renew for two additional years upon mutual consent. The contract is currently being reviewed by legal, but those will be the terms of the contract. We'll make no changes to that, so we'll request the board approval on that basis. Ask for any questions.
Any board comments?
Mr. President, this is Pam Haines. Can I ask a question?
You certainly may.
So my question really goes to the second candidate, which was SHI International Corp., which was over 300% higher than the successful bidder on this. Was that the second and only possibility? That would have been the choice of, I guess I want to know what was in that, what was in that bid that made those who were evaluating them feel that that was worth the money, I guess, especially given who the successful bidder was in relationship to them?
So, of course, you know, cost was certainly a concern. And another concern was to ensure that the service would be providing bilingual services. I believe those were the, as well as the experience of the vendor. I mentioned Blackboard's and a couple of other community college districts. So those were the factors.
Anything, member Rawlings, did you have a question?
I do. I may have a couple, but I'll allow folks to loop on through. So I was wondering about the scope of this work, in particular, as it relates to our in-house support staff. What I'm wondering is, it looks like from our background material that this is not 24/7 support. Am I correct in that?
I'll have to, I don't know whether Carl Silva is able to answer that question. My understanding was that it was 24-hour support.
Yeah, that's correct, Nick. Yes, Bill, it is 24.
This is 24/7, okay. And then, they're going to be familiar enough with our systems that they'll be able to do more engaged support with our students when they're calling in. So basically, what I'm trying to get at is, the value sometimes of having students contact in-house support is that the in-house support folks have a better understanding about how systems are integrated, and that about how systems are integrated and that they can provide a much more direct support to the student and some of the, maybe some underlying issues the third party may not. So I wanted to make sure that, that the scope of this work would include understanding our systems well enough that they'll know how to identify some of those underlying issues that then would get referred to our in-house staff.
Yeah, so there, there will be an onboarding process. I see Carl can maybe provide some more detail on that, but there will be an onboarding process where they, they kind of provide the first level of support, but then, of course, the, you know, anything beyond what they are capable of or knowledgeable of would, would get referred to our own in-house IT staff.
Yeah, and just to add, thanks, Nick, and just to add to that, Bill, we're looking to them to build up a, a library of knowledge-based articles and self-help articles that, you know, we can provide to, to students who may not need to, you know, who may not want to go and submit a ticket or interact. But if there are complex issues, our, our IT staff will certainly take those. This is really meant as an augmentation to our capacity and not necessarily a replacement. Thanks for that.
President Epstein, I had a question.
Go ahead.
Um, Nick, you mentioned 2,000 incidents. Is an incident anytime there's an inquiry? And if so, is 2,000 a reasonable number?
We believe it is. You're correct. It is, an incident is basically a, a, you know, a contact to the Help Desk service. We believe it is. It's, you know, obviously, it's, it's, you know, difficult to project at this point in time as, as we, as we ramp up, but we believe it is. And of course, if, if it isn't, we'll be coming back to this board to adjust that.
And then, and then for the contract price, if, can you have an incident that might take a student in Blackboard a half an hour to work on? And then you have some incidents that will take three minutes to work on?
So yes, so they, they, you know, the, the, the pricing kind of assumes an average amount of time per incident, and they sort of project it out that way. So there, there's, you know, some incidences may take a very short amount of time, other incidences take a long time, but it's, it's based on an, an average assumption of time spent per incident.
Okay, any other board comments or questions? Are there any public comments or questions?
There's no public comment.
Okay, thank you. All right, with that, we'll look for a motion.
So moved.
Second. Okay, we have a motion, a second. Please call the roll.
Hildegard Aguilalda?
Hi.
Darius Anderson?
Hi.
Amy Costa?
Hi.
Tom Epstein?
Hi.
Pam Haynes?
Hi.
Kevin Hall?
Hi.
Julian, Julina Grande?
Hi.
Jennifer Perry?
Hi.
Kim Perigo?
Hi.
Bill Rawlings?
Hi.
Valerie Shaw?
Hi.
Alma Salazar?
Hi.
Blas Villalobos?
Hi.
Thank you.
Okay, Nelson Carey's moving on to item 4.3, Public Relations RFP.
Yes, we're, sorry, we're seeking.
Go ahead, sorry.
We're seeking approval of a one-year contract with Mercury, amount of $240,000 for public relations services. So CalBright needs public relations to help us communicate our mission, vision, and values to our stakeholders and to the media. It will support CalBright, share content about our organization, our students on social and other media platforms. It will also identify and build relationships with key influences in California, can help tell our story and help us, help connect people who find themselves stranded, you know, in, in dead-end jobs or, or, you know, underemployed or under, unemployed. Help them connect, help, help, help us tell us our story about how we're connecting those people to living wage and benefit jobs. So Mercury has, has, has experience working with educational agencies in the state and, and with other California agencies. They've got staff located here throughout the state. You know, they presented a, a large team and a, you know, integrated 360-degree shop. They were not the lowest bidder on the contract, but they're also not the highest bidder on the contract. But, you know, nonetheless, we felt that the, the value they provided for the dollar was, 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 you know, was most beneficial of, of, of the other vendors who applied for their, or put in proposal. So we recommended them for the contract. Again, it's a contract of 240,000, and that's approximately 20,000 a month for one year with an option to renew for additional year upon mutual consent. Do folks have any questions?
I do. And, you know, you, this is Amy. You, you mentioned that they were not the lowest cost, and I generally like the lowest cost. So talk to me a little bit about your scoring criteria and what you were looking at in kind of, you know, a landscape of what were all the different criteria you were looking at and where did they score better than the other firms?
So, yeah, so certainly, we're looking at qualifications. We're looking at, you know, experience dealing with other, you know, dealing, you know, working in California and, and dealing, working with other similar California agencies. We were looking at, you know, basically what, what they proposed in terms of the, the scope of work, where their, where their focus was going to be, how well they understood what CalBright, what this, the position CalBright was in. Of course, we also looked at cost. It wasn't in this, obviously, in this case, the, the driving or the determinate and determining factor, but we did, we did look at, at cost. And, and again, you know, looked, looked at the level of service that they would, they would be able to provide us.
Can I ask?
Go ahead, Darius, sorry.
No, this is Darius. Can you tell me a little bit about who's going to work on the account? A lot of these big firms, you know, have lots of people come in for interviews and then ultimately, when somebody gets assigned, so who's going to work on it? And then can you tell me who the low bidder was and who was, you know, two of the other bidders?
I can take this one?
Yeah, thank you, Taylor.
So the, the lower, the lowest bidder was Redwood Consulting Firm. There was also VMA also bid for this, at this RFP. And your first question was?
Who's going to work on the account?
Darius, and the materials, Mercury was 240 per year, the other two were, VMA was 222 and Redwood was 204. So it was not a huge difference.
And that was relating to their experience. The, the Redwood had a very, very small team. It was located in only one area. Mercury is located all over the state. And Mercury, unlike the other firms, they're, they assign their top-level employees to CalBright rather than assigning the work to like more junior associates. That was one of the things that scored them higher whenever we were interviewing them is how they actually interacted with their clients. We felt that the way that they interacted with their clients was a higher degree of service than the other shops, which would delegate work to more junior employees.
And so let, let me ask the question again. Who is going to work on the account for Mercury?
Let me pull up that list.
While Taylor's doing that, I also just wanted to mention, we're viewing the work of PR as distinct from the work of the marketing and the work related to government relations. I think the reason that we have these separate contracts is that we have distinct areas of stakeholders with specific expertise and relationships needed in each. And as, you know, having the jurisdiction of being statewide, we have to have those embedded in major regions of the state. And in particular, I think, you know, because the scope of this PR contract is not touching any of other, Mercury's other practices around government relations or anything related to marketing, it's not focused on paid advertisement. It's an, it's a scope that's about generating value based on creatively positioning CalBright with our own media, social media, blog, content, podcast, and the, the mechanisms in which we need to be able to create a presence in different areas of the state relative to how we will be outspent by other out-of-state and for-profit college providers. So I just also want folks to view the scope of this work in relation to all of the things that we need to be delivering on and the position that we need to have statewide in order to do that effectively.
And it's a team of eight different folks. I can send you over this PDF if that would be easier.
We'd all like to hear it, Taylor.
We have Glenn Gritsner, Partner in Los Angeles, Jennifer Walsh, Managing Director out of San Francisco, Adam Kigwin, Managing Director, Anthony Reyes, Senior Vice President, Adina Tesler, Vice President, who is our primary contact during the bidding process, Joe, John Isaac, Vice President, Alexandra Lombardi, Vice President, and Abby McRae, Associate.
Any other? Go ahead.
I have a comment, and it's like, you know, I know that this RFP went out quite a while ago and in the interim, the entire global situation. And I think that fundamentally impacted our marketing would be. And, you know, and the governor's may revise, he's projected up to 25% unemployment in the state. And, you know, to have this big of a contract for PR for that length of time, given how dynamic the situation is, you know, I, I don't know that I can support that. I mean, I fully trust that you guys vetted it and they're the best firm, but, you know, I might be looking for a contract term that's slightly less than a year to bring down our dollar amount, see what they can do. I mean, we really are in a new world order. Oh, and, you know, given the unemployment rate, I think even the marketing strategy's going to be vastly different than what somebody would have surmised three months ago. That is correct. You know, I defer to the board on the, the contract term. I will say, what feels prudent to me is to be able to do the development work that we need in the short run and to be able to, I mean, this is, this one, the census contract, our contracts that we are, that we have a tremendous amount of oversight and input into the work. These are not outsourced capacities. These are things that we use to manage the work that we don't have comprehensive teams to execute against. So I would, you know, sort of welcome the opportunity to provide more regular update and, you know, expenditure monitoring and, and share that. And the board can continue to evaluate the, you know, the, both the quality of the work and, you know, we can collectively assess the, the need on a going-forward basis. But I, you know, I, I think it would be difficult to do in a shorter timeframe than a year, and I absolutely understand that if the budget conditions change, we would need to revise further our strategy.
Ms. Hildy, I have a question also.
Okay, go ahead, number Aguilalda.
So just to piggyback off of what Board Member Costa said, are we going to be looking at these individual contracts for how they fit into a new budget atmosphere? Are we going to be giving a more holistic look at how we can, how we can address this need? I know, I know, Ajia, you mentioned that your team is still looking into the full impact of how all these budget constraints will play out, but is this something that we have to look at more holistically instead of on a one-on, one-off contract basis?
Yeah, I think I was attempting to do that to sort of explain why we have the distinct contracts that we do for the different areas of work. And it is both about economizing in terms of the overall number of contracts that, that we have and, and having that be in relation to what we need to be able to have the capacity to deliver on. If we cannot reach folks and if we cannot position the college to be competitive with other providers in the predatory space, and we need to do so in a much more cost-effective way, then it is unlikely that we will reach them, to connect them with the opportunity and the services they need. So I think in all of these things, given the size of the state, given the diversity of the demographics that need to be reached, reached into, given the level of just volume around that, you know, I think what we would be evaluating contracts is how, how cost-effective is this relative to, you know, hiring additional capacity to take on these functions?
Member Hall?
Can you just give me a, a concrete example of, of, of the work they'll actually do? When you say that they'll be our conduit for social media and podcasts, things like that, just, just, I just want an example of, of one task that they will do to get the word out about CalBright.
One example of that that they've been really good with in the past, when they were talking about their work with the census in California, is reaching underserved communities. So one example that they have is they have a strong network of religious leaders in Southern California, and that's the conduit that they use to reach those populations to get the word out about the census. So that was one example that they gave. That's the kind of work that they do. It will dovetail into our outreach efforts with our Director of Outreach, Raul. So that's one concrete example of how they would use their network of local influencers doing work that they've already done to get the word out about CalBright and build our brand, because we will never have the marketing budget that will match one of the larger for-profits. And so we're looking at more creative ways to get the word out at a more grassroots level.
But Tom, if I can just interject again, I mean, and I don't want to belabor the point, but, you know, when you guys started this process, the state was at functionally zero unemployment, you know, a 4%, which is amazing. If we're projecting 25% unemployment in the state, potentially even nationally, based on what the Fed Reserve Chairperson said, it's a different equation for the marketing, sadly, because it means broader economic impacts. But it just means that there's a lot of people, unfortunately, who will be looking to upskill or to do different things. So I'm just concerned about locking ourselves into a model that's no longer relevant. So I would push back.
This is Darius. First of all, I'd like to say, I mean, Mercury is an A-plus firm. I, you know, I work with them on a regular basis. I know their great work, you know, statewide. So I don't have a problem with the firm. What I do have a problem with is the monetary amount and the optics right now of us going out and spending a quarter of a million dollars on a contract. And I understand, you know, the need for it. I, I, I think Mercury might be the right firm. They are an amazing firm, but how is the legislature, the governor's office going to go ahead and view this in face, in the face of everything else? And as Member Costa points out, I hope that we're not making a tone-deaf decision here that allows the legislature to say, see, look, they're spending a quarter of a million dollars right now and we're laying off and furloughing employees all over the state.
So, Mr. President, this is Pam Haynes. Can I speak to this issue?
Sure.
So I guess I take, I, I take everyone's perspective. I'd like to add a, a slightly different perspective from a different vantage point. In 2008, 2009, there were, there were huge, although not anything like what we're going through now, but there is huge dislocation. And the first, when those folks lost their jobs, they went into and sought community colleges as their opportunity either to get a degree, an associate's, or a transfer, or to get CTE training. Given, given the constraints of the budget and the allocations, and what I would say is that for Los Rios, there was more than a 17% increase. And because of the caps on that, and so I, I take your, your concern, Amy, at a heart, because of the caps on that, in order to survive and given the allocations, the community colleges then had to push down and push out and only have limited, what they did was limit access to classes for those. The most impacted by that, and this is an equity issue, the most impacted by that were students of color, African Americans, Latinos, immigrants, and, and... there isn't immigrants and, and I can't think of the fourth category. But those were the, those were the individuals who were the last hired in a good economy, the first fired or terminated or removal in a, in a bad economy. This is happening all over. We talk about essential workers in this particular environment, and it's huge. We, if anything, we need a marketing firm that can reach those particular individuals. There will be others who will naturally navigate, find their way to a community college. But there are those who, if you're not marketing directly to them, do not, will not know necessarily about Calbright, will not know about that. And this is a training college. This is about, this is about competency base, but it's, it is, it is strictly about economic development and training. And so I don't want us to lose sight of who we're trying to market to, to make certain that there are inroads for them into this economy as it builds back up. It will be a lost opportunity.
Can I, sorry, I don't know the protocol. I, I hear what member Costa's saying. And I, one of the things sort of to, I think, to build on your point, member Haines, is, you know, one of the things we want to make sure that Ajita points out is that we are not letting these potential students fall prey to the increased marketing arm of these for profit colleges. It's important, it's really important. And, but I do think it's a changed world. And I don't think Mercury, anybody has the crystal ball that will let us know where we are in six months and how reaching out to those populations is going to change. I mean, you know, right now, everything is COVID-19, COVID-19. Anyone who can penetrate through that fog is a miracle worker. And I do think Mercury has good capacity. So can we go back and say to Mercury, it's a new world? We negotiated this contract and a whole other set of parameters. Can we ask them to bring their costs down to some extent, given the new budget constraints everyone's facing? And can we do a six month contract? Because they're going to be doing a little learning along with us in terms of how to market in this changed environment. I don't know whether that's a tenable solution or not.
You know, I, can I just make one point to member Perry? I mean, are we really in competition with for profit colleges? Aren't for profit colleges going to have a hell of a hard time functioning in this current environment?
No, no, absolutely not, especially for folks of color.
Yeah, you know, I think this is a particular market demographic. It is in recessionary periods, as Pam's pointing out, when folks get squeezed out of the regular community colleges and the focus is on transfer, you know, more transfer level, more traditional, more folks who are going for higher level degrees. This is the market that falls prey to that. I'm going to call it an unholy cycle of, of marketing recruitment and enrollment funnel. And, you know, typically without the value that's generated by what one of our community colleges would do. And we won't, again, like, we won't be able to outspend it. That's not the purpose of these two contracts. While they seem like a large dollar amount relative to what spending occurs in the private sector for that kind of, for that, for that targeted funnel, that cycle, that's not the way to get there. This is a savvier approach that actually gets us to having presence in places that's driven by a communication of the value of what we do that creates distinction in the market for this market. And it's a market that we don't traditionally reach well during these periods. So, you know, this is, this is one of the ways in which we can break that cycle that occurs.
Hello?
Member Shaw?
Yes, hi. Good morning. I understand what Amy is saying. And I hear what Pamela is saying in terms of the trying to reach the people of color. I like Jennifer's idea, sort of going back. So, and my fear is, so I want to ask Ajita, do you need this contract? Number one, do you really need this contract? And number two is, because I, I think my fear is that because we're in this, this kind of economic situation, that the least of us are going to be pushed out of the system. And I think that's why we created this whole Calbright, Calbright system to help the least of us. And if we're, if, if the leases are pushed out because 25% of the people are unemployed, then that's a problem to me. So do you need this?
So, yeah, so, you know, setting aside optics aside, I know that that's unrealistic to, to actually do. There's a, there's a functional need we have for this 100%. And I do think, knowing what I know and having come from the regulatory side of the, of the industry, of the for profit college industry at the federal level, it's, it's part of the, it's part of having that solution in hand. I am, I am, you know, sensitive and conscious to what member Costa is saying, because I do, I think these types of expenditures can be mischaracterized. And often, when we're building public sector programs, we ignore the fact that just building it is insufficient to reach the populations that we need to with the services that we do, that it requires a much more refined, targeted, sophisticated way of connecting. And we typically ignore that. We have high level public service campaigns. We have types of ways to do that, but we, we often don't rise to the occasion with the level of sophistication and the actual outreach that is, that is needed. So, you know, if I, speaking specifically just to the work, I think this is very much needed. I do, you know, I am, I am sensitive to the, to the way that this can look publicly.
Can I weigh in just for a sec? This is board member Perrigo, despite the fact that I'm Amy Costa on screen. You know, I'm, I'm a little inclined to align with, with trustees Costa, Anderson and Perry on this in terms of, I understand that we're in this really weird position where we're riding this line, right? Like, we're trying to compete with the for profit, but we're public, right? And I can just, from being at a college that has one PR person that scratches her hair out daily, trying to get the message out to people of open classes and of what we do. You know, we know that we're going into a very ugly financial time where people are going to be spitting, flying and, and fighting for every dollar they can find. I, I'm kind of inclined to wonder, you know, how do we ride that line optically successfully? I think that trustee Perry is offering something that I think could temper that a bit, because I think that optically, every college would love to spend this kind of money on PR for their college, every single one of them, but are kind of constrained to do so. And I'm not saying that you don't have a need, and I'm not arguing against the reasons why you want to do it. I'm just writing the line of, you know, the optical line that I think we just need to think about how to address that. And take it back.
I think that's fair. I think it's a great point. And I think, I think the other part that's important of this is the purpose of this work and of the marketing work is not just going to be in service of Calbright. Part of the, part of the value that we have as a college is the system that we are a part of. And so lifting up the, the brand and the communication and the connection to what we're doing for this population, especially as we increase some of the collaboration with other colleges, that needs to be lifted up, that needs to be focused out, that builds everybody's collective brand across the system. So I, I do, I do hear that capacity constraint individually in local markets, they, that there's even a greater competitive disadvantage. But we should view these kinds of opportunities as a necessary way for us to, to raise all of those boats, because that is, that is part of what it takes. And that's what I mean when I speak to collaboration. I know we're used to working in these highly decentralized ways. But there is, there is a value from this work to, to building and increasingly focusing on elevating the brand of the, of the system relative to this population that needs to be served. So I just, I, I need Nick to weigh in on some procedural things. So I, I see the sort of conversation being floated around the six months. I'm not sure that that's specific, that specifically the timeframe that's in, that was in the process that we went through, but I just wanted to understand from Nick, if he could clarify for the board. You know, I, I know that we, we went through a period of revision on the initial contract. It is why we didn't bring this to the board last month. And, you know, we, we did a revision process and allowed bidders to come back with revised estimates, revised proposals, including many of whom submitted lower bids than had previously been submitted. But procedurally, from an RFP perspective, I want to be sure that this doesn't delay our work.
Yeah, so, and that might be a question better for legal to advise on. We did put out the RFP, did, was for a one year contract is, is what we had requested proposals on in our RFP. If we did go back and negotiate a six month contract instead, you know, I defer to, to legal on whether that would be appropriate or, or not, or whether we'd have to re, rebid the, the proposal.
Hi, this is Namita Brown from F3. And to answer next point, we can totally negotiate a different term. The parties mutually would be agreeing to modifying what the bid was and what the scope was. Now, we may have, we may have a circumstance where perhaps Mercury won't be interested. But at the end of the day, the option to renegotiate terms simply because it's between the two parties. We can totally do that.
Member Fitzgerald?
Thank you, President Epstein. I, I just wanted to, you know, make a comment. I, I feel it's important to factor in what member Haines and, and member Shaw said, you know, we have an obligation, I feel, to make sure our most vulnerable populations in the California community college system are not falling through the cracks and to fight for those people. But at the same time, I, I have to agree with, with member Costa and my fellow board members who expressed concern that the, the timing is, is rather important to factor in here. And especially, I want to, you know, highlight member Anderson's comment about how the legislature might view a $250,000, you know, contract at this time. And that, that does, I, I do have a, a large concern about specifically that, noting, we're, we're really trying to rebuild our relationship with the governor's office and the legislature.
Anyone else?
Tom, this is Jolena. I was just wondering, what would be the detriment of not approving this contract today and possibly going back to the scope of work from that census contract that we approved in January for 1.7 million? And seeing if we can't find a way for the scope of work to fit within the work that's being done on that contract?
The census contract is geared towards actual direct targeted outreach and, and traditional and non-traditional kind of marketing practices. So the, the scopes are different entirely, and it doesn't fit within the scope of, of what census is going to be responsible for delivering for us. So that, I'm pretty confident will, will, will not result in the work moving forward. The, the, the one other thing I'll say is, again, like, while I understand the sensitivity, it feels, it feels challenging to further delay this work, given where we are. So I think we are, there may be, there may be, maybe a third way, which is, you know, moving the contract forward and, and allowing us to come back monthly or bi-monthly with, you know, sort of with where the content is and allowing us to control expenditures at the back end and also retaining the flexibility that we would have in the contract to terminate if we need to terminate.
That's actually a question, Nick. I had, this contract, if it's for a one year term or a six month term or renewable six month term, is it cancelable with 30 days notice for any reason, any, any, and regardless?
Yes, yes, that's.
So, so after listening to everybody, I, I actually find a lot of value in what virtually everyone said. I, I see member Costa's point. I, I agree with member Anderson about which people are on the contract really matters. I actually think eight people is not real. I, I think in the end, you're going to end up with a couple of people. And I think we ought to push very hard to find out who those principal people are. You know, if it's two or three or four, it's, it's not likely to be eight. And really make sure we're comfortable with, with those folks. I think as a compromise, I mean, I would like to suggest, you know, approving it for six months and, but having it be renewable. So that, so the contract we're letting today, you would be authorized to go as high as 120,000. And, and then if we're not satisfied with the work, we can terminate at that point. But if we are satisfied and we'd come back, obviously, to the board for a review of the progress to date, that, that then it could be renewed for the remainder of the, of the year.
President, how, how would we quantify satisfaction? How would we measure that?
I, I would probably leave that up to Ajita, but, you know, I think there are metrics you can, you can put in. I mean, there are expectations from the contract and, and generally, you know, I've worked a lot of PR firms, and I think you can get a sense of, even if it's difficult to quantify, of how, how competent and creative and, and effective work is, even in a short period of time.
President Epstein, question. If these terms are not suitable to the vendor, what kind of recourse or plan B do we provide to the college in this regard?
I don't know, I would, I would think that we might have to go back to the drawing board if, if that wasn't acceptable, unless staff has a different view.
That would be correct.
Okay, any public comment? I'm sorry.
Tom, just a quick question. If these terms were suitable to the vendor, is there a possibility that we could ask them to go back and answer all our questions about how they plan on navigating through this new economic space? And given that they have experience in the educational sector, maybe they can provide further validation to us that the work they would be doing would be timely and appropriate? I'd love to see something like that, not only on this contract, or maybe all the other contracts as well at our next meeting.
I think, I think that's, Ajita, do you want to answer?
Sure, sure. So, yes, I think we plan on providing regular updates. You're going to see an introduction later in this meeting around the start of the work with census and how we're positioning the strategy there. And then that will, that is guiding, guiding census's work. And then we'll bring census back to, in a, in a future meeting, either next month or the following month, around what the actual, what the actual product is, based on what we're learning in the markets. So, you know, I, I think that is a, that is a regular updating feature where the board can directly ask questions about key aspects of the scope and the work. While, you know, sort of while also not creating an extra layer of of update that may, may not meet everybody's needs anyway.
Administrative burden, I get it.
Okay, are there any public comments on this subject?
There's no public comment.
Okay, let's, let's give it just a minute to see if anybody emerges here.
Sort of other question, so one option, duration. The other, is there a way for us to sort of cap monthly costs? Would that be of an approach that allows for the continuity of the work and?
I don't think, I mean, it, it, it's a $20,000 a month contract, so that's what the monthly cost is, it seems to me. So, member Rawlings, would you like to make a motion?
Sure, I'd like to move that we approve the contract with Mercury for a term of six months, not to exceed $120,000, and that, that be extended, able to be extended by an additional six months.
I second.
Okay. Any? Okay, please call the roll.
Ildegard Aguinaldo?
I.
Darius Anderson?
Aye.
Amy Costa.
Aye.
Tom Epstein.
Aye.
Jolena Grande.
Aye.
Pam Haynes.
Aye.
Kevin Hall.
Aye.
Jennifer Perry.
Aye.
Kim Perigo.
Aye.
Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
Valerie Shaw.
Aye.
Alma Salazar.
Aye.
Las Villa Lobos.
Aye.
Okay, great. The motion carries. Onto item 4.4, Medical Dental and Vision Employee Benefit. And I, as the Board of Trustees moves to the next item on the agenda, I note that this item deals with health benefit plans for Calbright employees. I am retired from Blue Shield, who is one of the vendors being recommended. And I want the record to note that I am publicly disclosing my previous employment and retiree status with that vendor. And although I am not required to, out of an abundance of caution, I hereby recuse myself from all discussion and voting on this item. And Vice President Haynes will conduct the business of the Board of Trustees on this issue.
Right. Vice President Haynes, should I proceed?
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you. So we are requesting that the board adopt Resolution 20-1 to offer health and welfare benefits to Calbright employees and contribute up to $9,840 annually towards employee health, dental, and vision premiums. And also, we're asking for approval of Blue Shield and Kaiser Health Plans and MetLife Dental and Vision Plans for the coming year. Calbright College needs to adopt our health, dental, and vision plans for employees. Currently, we are being served by the Foundation for California Community Colleges as they're providing record, employer of record service to all our employees. As a result, we are currently, our Calbright employees are currently covered by and enrolled in the Foundation's health and welfare plans. While this has served us well in starting staying up our operations in order to properly function as a community college district, comply with state law, we must establish our own plans. So we recommend, we did, we did quite a bit of of research, both with our, our insurance broker, Keenan and Associates, and also looking around at other, at other, what other districts offer. We also, you know, took into consideration the, you know, budget situation and, you know, the reduction in our funding. And we're recommending a conservative contribution of $9,840 annually per employee towards health, dental, and vision premiums. We also worked with our insurer, our broker, Keenan, to look at a number of different plan options. However, you know, at, you know, but most of those plans had very, very similar premiums. And, you know, the Foundation's plans are currently Blue Shield and Kaiser. And given the difference between Blue Shield and Kaiser and the other options, we thought it would be best to stay with Blue Shield and Kaiser as we transition off of the Foundation. And then for dental and vision plans, we, we looked at a couple of options. And Met, MetLife was, had, had a lower premiums and and better options for our employees. So those are our recommendations. And with that, I'm, I'm open to questions.
Any members have questions?
Vice Chair Haynes, this is Member Grande. I was just wondering, this is going to cover all employees, even part-time? And I believe, I think I saw in the resolution that it would be prorated for part-time, full-time equivalent employees. Can you explain how that would work?
Yeah, so I think, I think we're, we're still need to to work out some of those details. There are conditions under which part-time employees are covered and the conditions in which they're not covered. So that, that language is just applies to when, when part-time employees are covered. It's, it's the, the benefit is prorated to the, their number of hours that they they work.
Are there other questions?
Yeah, I've got a question. Sorry.
Go ahead, Kevin.
Thank you. So when we're talking about a $9,800 per year contribution, and this is following up on our discussion about budgets that Member Costa brought up in our last issue, is that more or less than what would have been contributed, say, six months or a year ago, when you were looking at the plans? In other words, with, with, with the anticipated budget cuts that the state's going to be dealing with very soon, is not, I just have no idea. Is 9,800 a reduced number in any way? That's what I'm interested in.
So the 9,800, it, you know, depends on, you know, what you're, what you're comparing to. I think, you know, when, when you look at community college districts, you know, I think a lot of community college districts have have very generous benefit plans. The, the Foundation has a very generous benefit plan. That's not as been, not, not as generous as as many community college district plans and not as, not as generous as the Foundation's plan. I think, you know, when you look at, at public, you know, agencies more broadly, you know, I think a lot of public agencies are moving towards a capped contribution. And essentially, we're, I should have mentioned this in in the presentation, but, you know, that, that 9,840,000 was basically pegged against the lowest cost plan. So, you know, for an employee that opts to, for coverage under the lowest cost plan, which is a Kaiser plan, then 100% of their premium would be covered by that amount. You know, but then if they opt for a higher cost plan, like a Blue Shield plan, then they would have to pay a share of cost. So, you know, we felt that was a reasonable compromise for our employees.
I'll add one thing, which is, I think, because we are in a small insurance pool, we also wanted to ensure, ensure at least a level of equitable treatment across our employees because they, it had, the, the, the cost of their premiums would vary by location and and age. And so this was a way for us to have both predictability around the budgeting and also provide a benefit that we knew would ensure 100% of coverage for the lowest cost plan for the costliest employee.
Other questions?
Vice President Haynes, just a quick comment. I know that Tom just recently recused himself because of his previous employment with Blue Shield. My brother-in-law currently works for Blue Shield, and my mother just retired from Kaiser after 38 years of service. And in the early 2000s, I think I, I worked for Kaiser as well. So out of an abundance of caution, I'm going to abstain from the vote as well.
Okay. Other questions from the members?
This is Member Rawlings. I just wanted to make a comment and kind of on Member Hall's point. This amount is less than I receive at Mount San Antonio College. I believe it's comparable with a variety of community colleges, even those that are similar in budget size to what we're doing. And I think I commend the staff really on trying to make sure that there is at least one option available that provides full coverage for employees. I think it'd be a good recruitment retention method.
Thank you. Any other questions for members? Then can I get a motion and a second?
I'll move through.
Second.
Second.
Who gave, who gave the second?
Darius.
Darius. All right, thank you. Then would you call the roll, please?
Yes, Darius Anderson.
Yes.
Amy Costa.
Aye.
Pam Haynes.
Aye.
Kevin Hall.
Aye.
Jolena Grande. Jolena Grande. You're on mute. Jennifer Perry.
Aye.
Kim Perigo.
Aye.
Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
Valerie Shaw.
Aye.
Alma Salazar.
Aye.
Las Villa Lobos.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay.
Hey.
Excuse me. I have, I didn't get to ask if there was public comment on that last Mr. Comment.
Sorry about that.
Chumachi, did you want to make a comment on that item? I have unmuted him. I'm not hearing. So, okay, go ahead.
My apologies. I didn't see the unmute button. The comment is that I, I just spent some time looking up the 2020 health rates for Region 1, which includes the entire Bay Area, actually includes the majority of the state of California. Calpers Kaiser is currently $9,222 for a single-party plan for, as a member of a school district. So with a contribution of just over that, you're essentially going to require anyone who's attempting a subscriber and one-dependent or a family plan to have significant out-of-pocket costs, well over $1,000 a month for a family. I'd like to note that the contribution you have adopted is significantly below what's normal at community colleges.
Yeah, I'm going to defer to the, can we ask Namita if the fact that comment was delayed should require another vote? You're on mute.
Mute. We can, we can do another vote, but, I mean, the vote was taken. It was a proper vote. If the board wants to have a clear record, it might be prudent to take a new vote. I would say, under abundance of caution, we can take another vote.
Okay.
So, and can we get, make certain that the mover and the second are still in agreement? Or if we need another motion?
I'm in agreement. Guaranteed.
Okay, great. Okay, taking vote. Darius Anderson.
Yes.
Amy Costa.
Aye.
Pam Haynes.
Aye.
Kevin Hall.
Aye.
Jolena Grande.
Aye.
Jennifer Perry.
Aye.
Kim Perigo.
Aye.
Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
Valerie Shaw.
Aye.
Alma Salazar.
Aye.
Las Villa Lobos.
Aye.
Thank you.
Comment, Pam, I think you're still presiding, which is, you know, based on the, the public comment, which I think is, is pertinent. And it's always kind of a question of what the percentage of premium the employer covering. I think as we look towards rates in the next year, it would be helpful if you guys could report back to us about kind of some of the practical implications for the workforce and what the out-of-pocket cost was based on their choices. I mean, I think in some sense, you don't really know until you know which plans people go with. But I think it would be helpful to get a report out after you have a little bit.
Yeah, we're happy to take that on. And I, you know, I'd formalize that in a employee survey around benefits that will, that we can administer and then report on the results for.
Okay. Tom, it's your turn.
Okay, on the item 4.5, I'm just curious, does the board feel like they need a break? Or do you want to keep rolling through here?
How much more time do you estimate we have, Tom?
I think, I think we'll be going till noon, probably.
I wouldn't mind a short break.
Yeah, how about, yeah, three minutes.
Yeah, I'd vote for a break.
Okay, it's, what time is it? It's 10:40, let's say 10:45, we'll be back, four minutes. Forum, so we're in.
Oh, sorry.
Wait, no, no, it wasn't. There's, we're still a few more who were popping around.
Sorry.
No, I, no, don't be sorry. I just was trying to get a little amusement. It's hard to be funny over Zoom, though.
Tom, you're always funny.
All right, item 4.4, 4.5, excuse me, Board Policy 2220.1, this regards to the Executive Committee. Is Cindy Smith going to present here from F3? She is.
Yes. Thank you. Good morning, President Epstein, Vice President Haynes, and members of the Board of Trustees. I am Cindy Smith, a partner at F3 with Namita. It has been several months since I've had the opportunity to present to you regarding board policy. Today, I have for you consideration and approval of Board Policy 2220.1 regarding the Executive Committee. You may recall back at the infancy stages of Calbright that the authorizing statute provides that the Board of Trustees can delegate authority to a committee of the Board. And back in August of 2018, the Board did take action to establish an executive committee as a standing committee of the Board. And back then, general policies regarding establishment of the initial executive committee were included in the original board policies that were adopted in August of 2018. In addition, specifically with regard to the authority of the Executive Committee, Resolution 2018-07 set forth the specific authority delegated to the Executive Committee, and that was also adopted in August of 2018. We've provided both of those documents for you. That's historical background of this issue. And since then, the seven-member Executive Committee has been addressing the business of Calbright at meetings every other month. Now, we are bringing Board Policy 2220.1 to you for approval. The policy consists of the provisions governing the Executive Committee that were included in the initial board policies with some adjustments, and the delegation of authority set forth in the resolution. If it would assist the Board, I'd be happy to run through the redline version of the policy to explain the provisions and the changes that were made to the original language. Okay, how would you like me to do this? Should I share my screen? Or can we pull up the redline attachment to this item?
I, I think you should just explain what the difference is. I mean, I noticed in the redline, there's a lot of red. But in fact, the authority of the Executive Committee that's all in red actually hasn't changed. Is that correct?
Correct. That is correct.
So the, the only, why don't you just go over what are really the changes?
Sure. So at the very beginning, that initial paragraph that was set forth in the original policy specifically addressed the formation of the initial executive committee, which is no longer relevant. So that was replaced with a summary paragraph addressing the general authority within ed code to delegate authority to a committee and introducing the establishment of the seven-member board, Executive Committee. So that's that introductory paragraph. And then what follows is pretty much just cut and paste from that original resolution of the authority granted to the Executive Committee. So at, at the end part, following that, there is a paragraph regarding regular meetings of the Executive Committee, which is new language, but it basically documents the actual practice of the Executive Committee to meet every other month that the full Board of Trustees does not meet, and that those meetings will comply with the Brown Act. The next section is membership, and that language, for the most part, from the prior policy, remains the same with some specific adjustments you will see. But the main change here is the two paragraphs added to address the, how the membership of the Executive Committee will be affirmed and designated on a, by, or once every two years, and to address the circumstance and circumstances in which a vacancy occurs on the board and a new member will be appointed. And then finally, under quorum, this language has changed slightly. And then finally, under quorum, this language has changed slightly to address the specific education code provisions that, that require that the Executive Committee, like the full Board of Trustees, acts by majority vote of the membership, rather than a majority vote of the members present. So that is the changes that you see there. And that is all of the provisions, and I am happy to take any questions, if there are any.
I have a question. Do we always have, under the authority, the statement under I that auxiliary services are deemed necessary to achieve the purposes?
Yes, those are, those, those separate designations of authority were literally cut and pasted from the original resolution.
Thank you.
I just, I have a procedural question, Tom, on this, because it's on as an action item. So I'm assuming that there's, that there's a desire that it'd be voted on today. But under Brown, when does this have to be a first-read, second-read, or would we have to suspend the rules procedurally to vote on it today?
I would defer to the attorneys.
My understanding is that there was never an adoption of a formal policy to approve policies. I know there was some discussion, and, and back when we were presenting multiple board policies to the Board at one time, where there was a need to review and, and consider and maybe provide amendments, that that was done through a first-reading, second-reading process. In this particular case, since it was just the one policy, we determined that we could bring it for an action item, I don't believe that there's any formal policy we would need to suspend, unless I'm missing something?
And that's my question, it's not whether or not we have a procedure on this, but I believe it might be a Brown Act issue, so I would defer to somebody who knows Brown Act better than I do. But it's just been my experience, whenever we vote on a, an item that either we have to suspend the second read and vote today, which we certainly could do, or it would require two readings, a first and a second. But again, I'm not a Brown Act aficionado, I'm just offering that as what I, what I'm used to as a standard protocol through Senate and, and campus ongoing business.
This is Namita Brown. I think the first and second read are ideal processes and incorporated as part of best practices, but there is no requirement, per se, that a policy come back twice before the body for it to vote, Tom.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other comments? Are there any public comments?
There is, Mr. Cal Chumaji would like to speak again.
Okay.
Hello, this is Eric Caliamegi, the Community College Association President and affiliate of the California Teachers Association, and I now know where the unmute button is, so I wasn't scrambling to find it. As stated in the proposed Board Policy 2220.1, the Executive Committee is empowered to approve policies, procedures, standards, management of property, the academic calendar, and employment of personnel. This appears to be the entire authority of the Calbright Board, save for the employment of the CEO. I encourage the Calbright Board to clarify what matters besides the employment of the CEO, if any, remain the sole purview of the full Board.
Okay, thank you. Okay, do we have a motion?
Move approval, Pam Haynes.
Second, this is Helly.
Okay, please call the roll.
Eldegard Aguilalda.
Aye.
Darius Anderson.
Yes.
Amy Costa.
Aye.
Tom Epstein.
Aye.
Jalina Grande.
Aye.
Pam Haynes.
Aye.
Kevin Hall.
Aye.
Jennifer Perry.
Aye.
Kim Perigo.
Aye.
Bill Rollings.
Aye.
Valerie Shaw.
Aye.
Alma Salazar.
Aye.
Villa Lobos.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, the motion carries on to item 4.6, Resolution Appointing Alma Salazar to the vacancy on the Executive Committee and affirming the entire Executive Committee membership. I don't know if this needs any particular explanation, maybe Cindy, why don't you just do the one-minute overview here?
Sure, so this is consistent with the policy that was just adopted by the Board in that the Board membership will be voted on and affirmed once every two years, on even numbered years. So this resolution encompasses that affirmation. In addition, there's currently a vacancy on the Board, and my understanding is President Epstein has recommended that Dr. Alma Salazar be considered for approval for that vacancy.
Okay, yes, and I, I am recommending Member Salazar because of her vast experience in the issues that Calbright deals with. Spoke to a few other members of the Executive Committee about it, and I, I think she'd be a great choice, and I, I hope you all agree.
I agree.
Is that a motion?
Yes. I will second that, because I'm tasked, even on Zoom.
Okay, so that's Perry, motion Haynes, second?
Costa.
Costa's second.
No, I wasn't a second, I was asking a procedural question, if we need.
Okay.
Okay, Member Costa.
I just didn't know if we needed public comment before we actually voted. I enthusiastically supported.
Oh, thank you for reminding me, yes, are there any public comments?
There's no public.
Okay, so please call the roll.
Eldegard Aguilalda.
Aye.
Darius Anderson.
Yes.
Amy Costa.
Aye.
Tom Epstein.
Aye.
Pam Haynes.
Sorry. Aye.
Kevin Hall.
Aye.
Jalina Grande.
Aye.
Jennifer Perry.
Aye.
Kim Perigo.
Aye.
Bill Rollings.
Aye.
Valerie Shaw.
Aye.
Alma Salazar.
Aye.
And Losvia Lobos.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, congratulations and welcome to the Executive Committee, I hope you don't live to regret it.
I'm sure it'll be fabulous.
Okay, on to item 5.1, Contracts and Purchases.
Yes, thank you, so this is a, a regular monthly update on our contracts and purchases that, that we'd entered into for the, the previous month. Again, there's very, very little to report from the last month, you know, mainly because we've, you know, as, as new leadership has come in and, you know, reassessing Calbright's operations, also somewhat due to, you know, the pandemic has unfortunately slowed some things down. One thing to report on the purchasing side is our WeWork lease in Oakland is going to terminate at the end of this month, and then our leases in Los Angeles terminate at the end of July. For Oakland, we're currently in discussions as to locating temporary and then permanent space for the future in Oakland. We will certainly continue to need a headquarters in Oakland, but given that we're all working remotely at the moment, there's really not a need for it for, for at least a couple of months. And then, you know, aside from those WeWork leases, most of our purchases continue to be month-to-month payments for various software licenses. If anyone, if folks have any questions, I'll, I'm happy to take them now.
Member Hall? It's, it's, Member Hall, I have a question. And it, it, it wasn't clear to me, are you going to be negotiating a new lease for the Oakland space? And if yes, when would that happen? And if yes, I mean, I've got to believe, I shouldn't say I've got to believe, there may be a chance that lease rates are coming down, obviously. And then second, in light of the fact that we're all adjusting to new work environments, would you anticipate having to lease less square footage moving forward?
Yeah, so we're, we're currently, you know, having discussions with our, our broker about all of that right now. So we, you know, we're not going to be going back to WeWork, that's, that's for certain, but we will, you know, in the coming months likely need some temporary space and, and then consider permanent space in Oakland. And, and, you know, really, I think everything's up for discussion right now in terms of, you know, the, you know, how much square footage and the configuration and, and, and the purpose and all those things. I'll add, we'll just, we're also looking at the geographic distribution of our workforce and determining sort of where there might, where it might make sense to have clusters of space once we see a relaxing of the shelter-in-place standards, and we see more of a need for, need and opportunity frankly, for there to be some convergence of staff, both in Northern, Central, and Southern California.
Any other comments? Any public comment?
There's no public comment.
Okay, with that, do we have a motion?
This is an information item.
Oh, thank you. You're right. That's why you're next in line. Okay, item 5.2.
Keep my mouth shut in that case.
Calbright Opportunity at Work Partnership Presentation. You're muted.
Hi, this is.
Sorry, I just wanted to begin by introducing Byron August, who is the Executive Director of Opportunity at Work. We wanted to spend a little bit of time sharing context for a new partnership that we're launching with Opportunity at Work for the college that we think will be extraordinarily beneficial, both to, to Calbright, its students, and potentially even system partners in various regions in California. Again, in the context of as we seek to think about how we are going to be responding to replacing the, you know, the displaced workers resulting from this economic dislocation. So I will turn things over to Byron to provide an overview and context for this work, and we would really love the opportunity to engage in a discussion with the Board. Also, Byron happens to be quite an expert on the demand side of the economy, and thought this would be also a good opportunity for the Board to engage on some of these questions.
Thank you, Adita. So I, I don't need to explain to anyone on this call, like, what a devastating sort of economic situation we are in more broadly, but two points I want to emphasize, first of all, that the current situation is not hitting equally, and it is absolutely hitting disproportionately, both from a health standpoint and from an economic and job standpoint, for the, the, the working learner, those are the classic sort of hard-working, lower-wage sort of striver that California, it's like the backbone of California, and I think that this sort of the, the target sort of audience for the California Community College System and for Calbright in particular. So that's one thing, and we could get into statistics, I'm happy to talk about that if people want to talk about it. But the second thing I want to emphasize is that even before this sort of, this crisis hit, the, 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 the people that the California Community College System serves have been absolutely, not only underserved, but, but they've been underestimated, and what Opportunity at Work has, has done in part is to really look at what is the talent pool in this country, and what is the talent pool in California? Where does it sit? Are we thinking about it the right way? And the, I, I guess, a fundamental thing that, that we know and we've seen, and now we have the receipts for, is that low wage does not mean low skill. And I mean that in two senses, number one, because you're in a low-wage job, does not mean that job itself does not require a lot of skills. And in fact, there are tremendous number of low-wage jobs that require a lot of skills. And one thing that we learned in our, our research that we published just before we all went to shelter-in-place is that you have in this country over 70 million kind of working adults who don't have bachelor's degrees, but who are skilled through alternative routes. They're stars, they're skilled through alternative routes. The largest number of them in aggregate are skilled in part through the, through community college systems, but even more, they're skilled on the job. And what our work did was actually look at the value of the skills developed on the job in many low-wage jobs, and just as one eye-opening finding, in, in the United States, 30 million, there are 30 million stars who have skills today for jobs, core skills today for jobs that pay over 50% more than the jobs they're in today from those, those skills. It's not that they are less skilled necessarily, in a, in a fundamental sense, it's more that their skills are being exercised in a, in a, in a business system or in a context that is less well-paid, frankly, and, and sort of low margin. And what does that mean for California? So in this slide, we talked about the stars, there are 8.4 million of these stars in California, they're over 40% of the active workforce. And if there's one message, I think, from this slide, it's that those essential workers that we're all seeing on the front lines today, they were just as essential before, and they really are essential to rebuilding our economy, and that sort of an equitable recovery is essential to rebuilding better, and for, to tap into this tremendous pre-existing talent pool that was so underappreciated beforehand, is one, is it's an enormous opportunity and need for the state, and frankly, it's an enormous opportunity for business and for employers. And a lot of what Opportunity at Work does is try to bridge that gap, say, look, say, this is a talent pool that you should be figuring out how to compete for to employers, not, not just, you know, you're not doing anyone a favor by doing it, you're doing yourself a favor. And so, like, we are really excited about the opportunity, when the need is highest, to be working with the California Community College System and with Calbright on how to allow competency-based sort of programs for high-wage jobs, people in those programs, graduates of those programs, to actually get those jobs in a faster way and to plug in employers to that. So that's, that's why we're here.
So if we can move forward to, to slide three, I think, you know, part of the reason we wanted to have this conversation was, we see this as an opportunity to combine the efforts to sort of leverage some of the best thinking on the demand side of the economy with solutions that can enhance the efforts of the current public education and workforce system to respond to the disconnected workforce. So what, what we're talking about with Opportunity at Work is really a marketplace-based approach that is, I think, different than previous conversations that have been had with the Board. So it is not solely a two-way conversation between individuals and employers, or just one-off partnerships with firms, but it is, it is thinking about not wholly reinventing the wheel, or about, but rather, but building to the gaps that we see. And so, you know, we see an opportunity for this to move us towards more rapid scale in terms of being able to have employers participate in a marketplace as, as work continues on the demand side. And in the past, we've talked to the Board about how we, we address some of the shortcomings and challenges for this population relative to the provision of education, relative to the educational experience we have, and how many barriers that exist in the current system to, to, to prevent folks from gaining the skills that they need from the education perspective. And linking that to the deficiencies, maybe that's not generous, but the challenges, the barriers that exist on the demand side of the economy is a core part of what needs to be unlocked in order for that transfer to occur, in order for those labor market transitions to occur. transitions to occur. And when we think about it, not just as a single episode in an individual's life, but we think about it as a point in time that they have the opportunity to get skills and cycling that into a process of lifelong learning where that becomes not a semantic thing that we say, but an actual operational reality for the way that we set up our programs and for the way that we continue to deepen our connection into what is happening in the labor market. So I would love for Byron to talk a little bit about the marketplace itself and then we'll just, we'll share a little bit more about how we view the challenges that are solved by this partnership. And then would love to open it up for, for any questions that the board might have.
Right, thank you. So Opportunity at Work is a 501(c) nonprofit organization, so we're not, we're not for profit. And it's often hard for nonprofits to attract the kind of sort of technology talent and product talent needed to really enable this sector, the public sector, the nonprofit sector to be able to do this as effectively as some other, some other ways. So we have, I think, succeeded at doing that. And the stars, talent marketplace for California, which we, which is for, it's really for, for stars, for people skilled through alternative routes in California, throughout California. And this is the sort of beginning. The way it works is there is a very well-designed set of user journeys where for an employer, they can very easily sort of reference the jobs you just dropped in, you know, a link to your job description or many other ways to do it and to actually start to be, to sort of like see the kind of talent coming out of the California Community College System and other stars and work parts of the workforce system. Very importantly, it's also for the provider side, whether that's, you know, a Calbright College or whether that's an inclusive training program or whether it's the non-college graduates of a boot camp, that the institution, what happens in a lot of these, you know, these big kind of job training, job search platforms is however much you support the individual up to that point, they're kind of on their own in that and they don't have the support of parallel institutions. And I think we really have done it so that the supportive institutions, whether that's education and training or its wraparound services or its guidance can be part of the journey through job search. And then ultimately for the individual to really make it designed around, around them, around the stars. And so it makes it very easy for all of that to happen on all sides. And as a result of it being very easy, it makes it very easy for businesses who are, who have not been hiring so inclusively in the past to get started. Because what those businesses want to know is what is working for other businesses? That's the most persuasive thing to them. And the marketplace is designed to feed up recommendations based on what is being successful for businesses trying to solve the same problem, or employers trying to solve the same problem. So it's taking the same kind of technology that powers eBay and the like and putting it for a public purpose. And ultimately, it also makes it very easy with all the kind of, the right sort of privacy and anonymization to get genuine feedback from employers that help you improve programs, help you improve presentation. And so actually, it becomes a kind of a feedback loop for continuous improvement of these programs. And that's particularly important right now because of course, the target is moving very quickly. There's new jobs emerging, there's jobs surging, there's jobs that are not. Oh, and the last thing I'll say is while this is, it very easily can move across different kind of job categories, we're committed to keeping it focused on kind of middle wage and higher wage jobs. The point of this is not just to get any job, but to, but to really be able to reflect, to translate your learning into earning, right? The whole point is for people to earn more. For Opportunity at Work, our goal over the next 10 years is to empower a million stars to make on average $20,000 more a year. But we're not doing that by ourselves, it's entirely through sort of partners and offering these, these utilities in a sense for our partners to be successful.
So I'll add to that, moving to Ron, slide four. The, the purpose of doing the work in this way is also of significance. So when we talk about Calbright being the R&amp;D arm for the system and for colleges in the system, what it means is we have a more rapid capability to actually develop programs and to, that are driven by the demand side of the economy in a way that can leverage the strengths that multiple, multiple institutions or parts of the workforce system might have. And the action part of this is probably the most important part of this. Often, the tools that we use to respond to things are changes in policy and there's always too much of a time lag between actually converting those into operational programs and using those programs and what we learn from them to drive additional improvements and insights. And so we are particularly excited about this partnership because it actually allows us to, to build on top of the marketplace, a way of designing some programs and services that connect more closely with employers at earlier points in the student journey. So that it's not just, we're waiting for placement at the end of the equation, but it is reflected in the content and curriculum that is designed, but it is also implicit in the way that we offer services and connect, to connect individuals early in their program journey. So it's a, it's a, it's a way for us to think about multiple levels of that engagement to occur for our students before the time in which they separate from the college.
Okay, so is that, is that the complete presentation?
Yes, so the last thing I will mention is part of the doing is about, oh, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Sorry. Part of the doing is about being able to pilot this in particular regional markets. And so we are opening up this development process with two colleges in the system, Compton College and Bakersfield College. So in the Bakersfield and the LA market. And this will allow us to actually set up the conditions under which we can expand this out to other interested campus and district participants. And so I am thankful for the partnership of Bakersfield and Compton and the Circle Guard. And we're very much looking forward to running forward with this thing as quickly as we can.
Thanks. Comments from the board? Dr. Salazar?
Ajita, just curious, what, what would a successful outcome look like once these colleges have piloted this?
So, so we would have, we would look at parts of the local workforce development system, whether they be local chambers, individual firms, small and midsize firms, an easier access point that Opportunity at Work will help facilitate to get those demand side partners into the marketplace. And we, and what we will provide is both our own on-ramp programs targeted to this market that we're talking about, as well as more continuous pathways to upper scaling opportunities at existing community colleges that will help those graduates actually access labor market opportunities. So the idea is that it's both an alignment build in terms of our programmatic activity in the traditional sense on the education side to push us more towards skill-based credentials as a system, but it is also in facilitating that, that engagement with the labor market, not just for Calbright students, but, but for system students.
If I might add, I would, I would love to see, first of all, the Calbright team is built out of pipeline of employer partnerships. One purpose of this is to make it easier to activate those employer partnerships. So it's not just about, oh, come, you know, come to a meeting, be in a company, but like, here's a thing you can actually do in your business. And I think that ultimately, you know, separates the good talk from the good action, right, is to sort of plug in. And it's, and to be fair, they might have that intention, but it's, it's, the systems to exclude in hiring are incredibly efficient. So we just, we can make the system include, we don't need to make them inefficient, but we need to make them efficient enough that, that's, that a business that's wanting to do the right thing could, can, you know, can do it without feeling that it's setting them behind as a start. And then the second thing, and I think this is more on us at Opportunity at Work, you'd want to see some new employers, I mean, there'll be California employers, but employers that hadn't engaged with the system before, kind of sort of discover it through this platform. And then, and then the third thing is you would, you would start to see, maybe not answers yet, but some interesting questions, sort of some of those employers saying, oh, could you, we're actually looking for this too, like you have programs like that. And I think the fact of the matter is, given, given the scale we, we hope to reach, that some of the answers will be within Calbright and will help shape Calbright's programs. Quite a few more, probably over time, will be in other parts of the system, which is as it should be, right? Because it's meant to sort of lift the whole system. And yet others might not exist in that form, they might be emerging. And again, this is not a very short-term outcome, but I think as new fields emerge, I mean, there's no reason why the inclusive parts of the system shouldn't be right at the cutting edge, right? Like why that should, it shouldn't be like a trickle-down thing later, it should be empowering, you know, your constituents to be part of it from the beginning.
Thank you.
So this is Pam, I do have a question. I want to go back and make certain that I'm understanding the term that's used at the very beginning of this is that we're talking about, we're talking about folks who don't have social capital. And so while I know that you've explained, embedded within what you've explained, but I, I want a much more congealed, the social capital piece, because what we usually say they're, they're underemployed or, or they're undereducated or they're undertrained. So can, can, can one of you, Ajita or Mr. Auguste, can you explain that term in terms of the profile that we're talking about?
Sure, I'm happy to begin and Byron can jump in too. You know, I think part of what we mean by that is there's, there's two types of employers. Let's say, one type of employer is a set of employers who wants to hire a diverse and inclusive workforce and wants to, you know, believes in equity and wants to hire. And so we need to make it as easy as possible for them to have a tool and a place to go in order to facilitate that to happen. So it doesn't replace employer engagement work on our part, it actually allows us to have that be as frictionless as a process as possible. The other types of employers are, let's say there's three. So the middle type of employers is employers who are a little bit unsure about the talent pool, they view it as slightly riskier. And that is a ability for us to demonstrate how well this can work for them, to actually prove an ROI, to prove a concept to them, to make the heart and mind cultural shifts in the demand side of the economy in the same ways that we're trying to get skills-based credential in the culture and the ether of the way that we do things on the education side. And the third category is the, is the folks who, who are farther away from this. And how do we begin to step them up into, into this worldview where they can both see value that's been demonstrated by hiring from this talent pool, actually change their view of them as, as asset-based talent rather than as, as, you know, skills deficit low wage workers?
Can I just ask a question? Because I really feel like I need folks to kind of dumb it down. This is like really high level, or Salazar probably has a lot more background knowledge on this. But I need like a step back. So Opportunity at Work is a nonprofit and gathering, it's a site platform. So kind of explain to me from a Calbright student's perspective, how this works, what the timeline is, and how this will be operationalized with the partnerships that you've outlined.
Yes, so we're planning on operationalizing it over the next couple of months. There's three ways that we see, there's, there's three parties that, that connect over the platform. One is sort of job seekers, so those who are seeking employment opportunities and those who are, and employers in that marketplace and providers in that marketplace. So what a student would experience is both an understanding of aligned employers or employers they could be a match for. And what the provider, what we as Calbright see also for that student is places where we can enhance, you know, what, how they look to employers and support and counsel them through those sets of activities. So that's one layer of transactional engagement that is aimed at getting folks into those jobs and privileging the folks that we're talking about who are non-degreed folks in that employment equation. The other part, so it's, it's better than a two-way market where it's just job seeker trying to find their way in the morass to a hiring opportunity. And it's more aligned with kind of where employers' heads are at, given the market conditions that we're in. The other layer of that is there's a whole data layer, which we didn't talk about, which gets a little bit more technical, but the shorthand of it is really that what we learn in that transaction then gets fed back to Calbright in a number of different ways. One, in aggregated understanding of what is needed in the labor markets and not just with single large-sized firms, but within local areas, within particular industries, in smaller and mid-sized firms that usually we don't get to with some of these other employment tools, as they were. And those can both drive the, the improvement of our support services around the set of activities, as well as understanding if we need to augment things in our, in our, in our educational programming that actually better position for the skills that are needed for those hiring employers. So there's like a virtuous cycle established in terms of those activities.
If, if.
Go ahead, Byron.
Well, I just wanted to add in response to Board Member Costa and a bit to Board Member Haines' comments, outside of the system, Board Member Costa, that here, what I see is the core challenge, there are many, but the core challenge is this, Calbright is training its students for jobs that are upwardly mobile jobs, jobs where their, their employer would then investing behind their skills. There are jobs that for reasons mostly of convenience and thoughtlessness, like when they go apply for these jobs, these higher wage jobs, more technical jobs, an enormously large percentage of the employers that they would reasonably be looking for jobs at are actually automatically, no human involved, screening them out before being considered for those jobs. So you're, this is a competency-based program that it, or a set of programs, they're really developing their skills for those jobs very intentionally. And yet, the, the way this sort of like these high-speed applicant tracking systems work is that because they don't have a specific degree and in particular because the job they had before is probably not the job that the keyword match is looking for, they will not be considered. So I don't mean they'll be considered and found lacking, I mean they don't be at all. So the first and most important thing this marketplace does is aggregate a set of employers who are actually interested in their talent and their skills and what they have to offer. And so instead of spending a ton of money trying not to look at them, they're actually trying to look at them and evaluate them. So that, without that happening, nothing else really works, right? Because it's one thing to say, oh, are you doing as good a job training them as some other school or, you know, but if you are and they still can't get a look, then that's, that's a disaster. So that's the most important thing. And then if that's happening, what's great about that then is employers who are considering them, some will feel they're ready, some will feel they're not, they'll have specific feedback and, right? But these are now employers whose feedback you can in a sense trust a little more because they actually want to hire them, right? So you're then getting feedback so you can improve your programs. And again, when I say yours, not just yours, it's all of them. And then finally, and this is a more subtle thing, but it, it's only one aspect of the data, but we're constantly being told that certain job training programs or, you know, like, don't work, quote unquote. And, and, and the point is, it's sort of assumed that says the training doesn't work. But if people aren't being considered, then it doesn't matter if the training works or not. So you start to get a much better, fairer, more insightful view of what's working well and what's not working well, because you actually are engaged with employers who want to hire your people. So I think that was fundamental.
Question though, so have this platform, yeah, I get it's about connecting and it's also about in some ways hoping, helping students overcome probably some, some bias that they're experiencing in the marketplace. But, you know, do you, is the marketplace multi-dimensional in which there's a bunch of different employers? Is it regionally based? Is Calbright the only person that's inputting in students or do you have other training inputs? Just a little bit more detail.
The aim is absolutely populate both sides. And what's so attractive about Calbright as a partner from our perspective is an intention to bring others, to help bring others to the table, but we'll be doing that too. But I think our, and we'll be doing that with other providers.
Yeah, and I was gonna say, that's, that's, that's gonna be the local market development that we, that we do in these first two places too. And that will hopefully expedite the model that we would use potentially in other regional markets. So it's, it's, it's very much like connecting into the system and taking away the challenges that normally face in engaging in this way. Without cost to the system.
Okay, we still have three more items, some of which are long. And so I'd like to encourage this to get wrapped up. And so I'd like to encourage this to get wrapped up as quickly as possible. Anybody else have any?
Just a quick comment, I'll try to keep it short. I just wanted to acknowledge Byron for his exceptional work on this. I had the opportunity to look at your website. And there's a specific page on your website, opportunityatwork.org/problem, where I think you have a graphic that lays this out pretty, pretty skillfully. So there's skilled workers on one end and job opportunities on one end. And what I think Vice President Haines was talking about in terms of her question around social capital was this labor market opportunity gap. That's talking about pedigree-based hiring, community wealth, race and ethnicity, socioeconomic status, limited worker voice, promotion practices, employment discrimination, unequal social professional networks. If that's, if that's pretty much, if that's accurate, please let me know. But I think what I'm, my question is, you're looking at all these social capital issues. And it's very much like the layers of an onion, right? It's like I'm thinking of when, back to my staffer days, when a legislator tries to author a bill to just, in a single pen stroke, fix all these problems, they all of a sudden start uncovering or peeling back all the layers of this onion. It becomes virtually impossible to fix this problem. So you're basically saying that you can address these social capital issues by bringing the gap between skilled workers and job opportunities closer together. Not necessarily solving for pedigree-based hiring or community wealth or each one of those other social capital problems. But just by narrowing the distance between these two parties, you can get more dialogue, more direct evaluation that takes away those social capital issues. Is that what you guys are doing?
Yes, it's not that we can solve those problems by the solution, but we make it possible. Because like people are working hard, like there's great work being done to solve those. But if you can't then connect it in the end, if you can't go the last mile to a better paid job based on your skills and the support, then it's very hard for it to work. So that, yes, that is exactly right. And if Board Member Aguirinago, if you have any spare time, we could, we could use you on our, on our go-to-market marketing team. Because that was excellent.
Consider me in.
Okay, anything else? Okay, thank you very much, Mr. August and Dr. August, I'm not sure. And we'll move on to the next item.
And thanks.
Thank you.
The, next is 5.3 Bakersfield College presentation.
Do we have Dr. Christensen?
I'm here.
Okay.
President Christensen, so happy to see you. Thank you for joining us today.
Happy to be here.
Well, you'll hear me talk a little bit less in this one. We have started a partnership with Bakersfield College to get us to this, this sort of better standards-based approach to non-degree, skills-based credentials, leveraging some of the great leadership and work of Bakersfield College with respect to micro-credentialing and how micro-credentialing can translate into better connection into system programs across different campuses. So I'll let Sonia take, take the lead and talk a little bit about the context of the partnership. And we're here to have, also answer any questions about it.
Well, good morning. I'm, I'm really happy to be here and I see so many familiar faces. I also have with me Dr. Bill Mosley, who is the key working on the details of how we can get students working at CalBright through a program to then link up to Bakersfield College and the programs we offer. And our hope is that, and our belief is that this will become a model that really positions CalBright to partner with all 114 community colleges in the state of California. I also wanted to acknowledge Tamika, who is Ajita's right-hand and working with us on this project. I have a few introductory comments. For those of you who don't know me, I'm president at BC and I've been here for over seven years. Bakersfield College in the South, San Joaquin Valley serves very poor students, rural students, first-generation students. So the questions that were being asked in your previous discussions gave me a lot of heart. Because clearly you understand the population that we are working with. Prior to coming to BC and working with the California Community Colleges, I was in Oregon for 10 years. And I wanted to start by saying that it is a wonderful time to be in the California Community Colleges under the leadership of Chancellor Eloy Oakley. What Chancellor Oakley has done is two things. Number one, he has made equity at the center of all his work. And with that, for the over 2 million students, the largest in the United States that this system serves, it is his agenda on equity and the policies passed by Board of Governors and then legislated has helped us, specifically Bakersfield College. If you look at our student numbers, if you look at completion rates for degrees, if you look at equity measures, when you look at our Latinx population, our African-American population, you will see a significant exponential increase in the outcomes. And all of this was made possible by various policy changes. But fundamentally, the Guided Pathways Framework has really integrated our campuses like no other framework has in the past. The silos of career technical and transfer all sort of have come together, faculty, staff administrators working towards a common goal. And then we have CalBright. And I'm here to tell you that from my perspective of having been a math teacher in California before I went away, to now being president, and also being involved in both the Northwest Commission as well as ACCJC, that what is happening with CalBright serving a population through methods that have not scaled up in the past has a huge promise for California. And in fact, I fundamentally believe that the work CalBright is doing and will be doing in partnership with the 114 community colleges will become a national model. What do I mean by that? CalBright is fundamentally looking at the non-credit tool and looking at competency-based education. Those are two levers that can open up spaces that have been locked for a long time. Because in traditional academia, we've been working with credit instruction. And we now have nationally the political will to look at recognizing learning wherever learning has happened. But in the past, and even currently, we don't have the methods, for example, the transcript that our students, your students in the California Community Colleges have, recognizes a course, pre-calculus, philosophy with a grade, right? And that is a proxy measure and has a lot of information. But when we are looking at a workplace, we just heard from Opportunity at Work that is changing with artificial intelligence, with now post-COVID-19 world that we are entering, the agility that we need to be able to represent learning within traditional academia, those kinds of issues have been opened up. Recently, the United States Department of Education recognizes national accreditation and regional accreditation as being the same. And there is no differentiation between these two entities. So when I talk about the political will that is at play right now, both in the state of California and also nationally, we have reached a tipping point to be able to scale up the work that CalBright can now offer the populations of California that have not been served as well by the California Community Colleges. I am a huge fan of the California Community Colleges. I feel we have laid out the infrastructure. And when I say infrastructure, the image that comes to me are the Los Angeles freeways and highways. And what we have done in the California Community Colleges with guided pathways is lay out the infrastructure for education. We have created the pathways to baccalaureate completion by sequencing courses with career technical and transfer now being part of the same terrain and no more divided up. With a program mapper technology tool that we have, the CSU just got funding from College Futures, $500,000 to do baccalaureate completion with a program mapper. So you don't stop an associate's degree and start a baccalaureate, but you look at baccalaureate completion right when you're in high school. And the Learning Labs has just funded $500,000 for the UC. And when we're in that world, CalBright is bringing to us an additional tool called badging, called micro-credentialing, where with the work CalBright is doing, we traditional academics can now look at a course and think about the learning that happens within that course, and we can badge it. Now, you might think badging is only in sort of the gaming realm, that it has limited use. But the reality is, you will hear from Bill Mosley, that the badging concept, when we tie it into the core of the academic curriculum, the DNA of the academic curriculum, which is the sacred student learning outcome, we are able to unlock the language that is traditionally academic language, converting SLOs into calling it a badge. And with a technological representation that is now available to us, we can, within the same infrastructure of freeways, the baccalaureate pathways with SB 1440, with looking at CTE certificates, we now have the, the non-credit CBE truly playing a critical role. And in my language, I call it the interchange. In this infrastructure, we did not have the interchange. And CalBright is going to become the interchange for that, those populations to be able to get a medical coding, short-term certificate. Bam, they get it done quickly. It's available, available to them where they are. They can get out there, they can find a job. And guess what? They can continue at Bakersfield College and other California Community Colleges because we're all connected within the system. And they can continue onto becoming a CNA or an RN and potentially go on into getting a bachelor's degree in the health field. That's just one example of what this scalable model can do. So in conclusion, I'm sorry, in, in conclusion, before I hand it over to Ajita, my message today to you, board members, is that we are just at the beginning. You know, we're talking about COVID-19 and exponential curves, right? We are in the beginning of solving two problems. One problem is we're creating the infrastructure where we can talk about, use the same language and the same technological representation of degrees, certificates, non-credit, and competency-based, all in the same landscape. And we do it boldly and with confidence because they all represent learning. One is not better than the other. They're all about learning. And second, what we're doing is we're actually going to get a cohort of students and take them through to completion. They get a job and they continue on the pathway. So we'll try and, try it out with a few cohorts right at get-go. So now I'm done Ajita and I'll turn it back to you.
So I am noticing that we are running very short on time. And so I think my suggestion would be, thank you to Bill Mosley. For folks who are more interested in learning more about this work and this presentation, we're happy to provide some alternative forum to, to share a bit more. So thank you so much for Sonia and apologies to Bill for cutting things short.
I just, I just want to say one thing. And thank you very much, President Christian. That is, I do want to say I visited the college and they had the best early guided pathways program, I think perhaps in the whole system. It was amazing and I know you've made a lot of progress. Congratulations for that. And I, I also want to thank you for what I think you made just about the strongest case from CalBright I've ever heard from anyone. And really appreciate that. I hope you, you can, some of your colleagues will, will pick up on, on the, on the, on the judgment and rationale that you've created. And so thank you very much for that. But, you know, I, I know we're running late, but I don't, if you have somebody on, you know, teed up to, to say a few things, we'd be happy to do that, but we just.
I think it's, if it's okay, maybe we, we move on and we schedule. If there are folks that are interested, we're happy to send them more information. I do want to make sure that we get to the, the marketing presentation and we'll need to cut that to maybe significantly shorter than we were at. And then if we need to, to move the portal, student portal conversation to, to next month, we're, we're happy to share that you have some of the information already.
Okay, are there any board member comments or questions for Dr. Christian?
Tom, I, I don't, I don't need to waste time on this, but I would like for this to come back if possible. Just because I would really like to know like what the colleges are doing with their constituency groups to work on an alignment here, you know, like what conversations have happened with your faculty to make sure that, you know, there is a path from CalBright's badges into a degree program if that's what they, you know, want to continue to do. So I'm just, you know, I don't know if there can be a quick answer to that, but I'd certainly like to know more about the conversations that you've had with your faculty in particular about, about how you're doing this.
So please answer that.
Our faculty are completely involved. Specifically, we're working on medical coding. So our nursing faculty and healthcare faculty are involved. And we are happy to be back and go into more specifics. Thank you.
Any other observations or questions? Well, thank you so much, President Christian. We, we really look forward to seeing this progress and, and hope that, that we can really help a lot of students together. So appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and move on to the marketing presentation.
President, I'm sorry, we do have a public comment on this item. Go ahead, Dolores.
Thanks, Aracely, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, Dolores Davidson, Vice President for the Academic Center for California Community Colleges. We continue to have concerns regarding CalBright's academic content and duplication. First of all, it's possible for non-accredited institutions such as CalBright to work with an accredited institution such as Bakersfield College. If the curse word totals more than 25% of the program, the accredited institution would need to go through substantive change process. That's obviously the college's decision. They would also have to go through the US Department of Education, which could delay these processes that they're talking about. Secondly, we would be very interested in learning the positions of Bakerfield College's discipline faculty, the curriculum committee, and the academic senate to, in regard to this partnership. The same is true of the partnership that you mentioned with Compton College in the last presentation. And finally, of the greatest concern, it appears these badges would lead to credit, not just at Bakersfield, but potentially from other colleges throughout the state. We are curious as to know how this is not a duplication of the courses and programs being offered in health and information technology and medical coding at the colleges in the California Community College system. This appears to be counter to the expectation that courses and programs being taught at CalBright would be non-duplicative of those offered within our colleges. It might be possible for students to receive credit for the work that they have done, but only through credit by exam or through credit for prior learning. And both of those practices are currently in use at the California Community Colleges. The presentation really only reinforces that there's nothing in CalBright's program that doesn't currently exist in our system. Thanks and sorry for so hasty. Hope you're all staying safe.
Thank you. Before we go on, it is 11:52. We have another meeting that starts at 1:00. And so I want to kind of get the, take the temperature of the board to see how long you're willing to go here in this meeting. So that will help us determine how much more presentation we can, we can manage today. Anybody have any thoughts?
This is Bill. I think I'd be willing to go an extra 15 minutes past our normal end time.
I would too, Pam.
Tom, Tom, what, what, what time are you plant? Well, right now, what time would you plan to end at noon?
Originally, that was the, that was the goal, but if, if everybody can stay till 12:15, I think that's, that would be a reasonable compromise. And that'll still give us a little bit of a break before we do four more hours of this. Okay, so with that, no objection to that. So Ajita, there's two items. There's the student portal and the outreach and marketing. Are you? Are you suggesting that we defer the student portal presentation?
Yes.
Okay.
And I believe you have a copy of that presentation, so we're happy to answer any questions about it offline after.
Okay, so item 5.5, outreach and marketing presentation.
Great, I'll get started and try to move quickly. Thank you. Good morning, President Epstein, Vice President Haynes, President and CEO Talik Raminem. I'm Ariselli Cruz, the Senior Marketing Manager at CalBright. Have almost 20 years of experience and I have earned an MBA in marketing from University of Phoenix. I have the student loans that are associated with that degree. I did that degree online fully for two years without researching any other alternatives. And I'm joined today by Almira Ahmed, who is supporting our marketing and analytics efforts and comes also with several years of marketing experience as well. We're both part of the advanced team, so it's been a pleasure working together.
Good morning. Thank you for having me, and thank you for having me back on the team.
Our goal today is to give you a brief overview of our activities for the last several months, share what we've learned from the process, and frame what we're looking forward to in the future. We realized and have reprioritized the need for self-reflection. To seed the bitter cohort, we needed to cast a wide net in order to create brand awareness about the newly named online college. Once people started coming through the CalBright virtual doors, we could begin the long process of optimizing our marketing and community outreach strategy. Marketing communications was broken out into four key strategies: paid, earned, shared, and owned, abbreviated P E S O. Our marketing, I'm sorry, our PR firm Mercury will focus on developing the earned, shared, and owned content strategies, while our marketing firm Census will focus on the paid strategies and execution thereof. I worked very closely with Taylor to ensure our activities are in sync, building our brand consistently across all media, ensuring our efforts are additive and not duplicative. Many of you participated in stakeholder interviews conducted by Census that are helping us reevaluate our brand awareness strategies in this new world we're in with COVID. We've since paused our ad spend, giving us more time to reach our programs, conduct additional market research, and work on our enrollment pipeline, reflecting on our learning to shape our plans for the future. As this chart shows, it's a measure of all of our website traffic as a function of our marketing activities. In the interest of time, we'll go into more detail about these later.
So what we're doing, so you saw the traffic on the site before, what we're doing is a comprehensive analysis of what has occurred in the last year. First, you know, the goal really at that time was to build awareness and drive traffic to the website, which should happen successfully. We are now taking a look at all of those tactics and considering them through different measures. What we are trying to do is balance what we're spending with attracting the right audience. Our goal is to serve a particular part of California's population, which is an underserved market. So what we want to look at is our success in doing that and how much it costs us to do it. With that, we are starting to restrategize. And, you know, we're looking at all of, we're looking at all of the different data pieces in the pipeline. Here's what we've learned so far. Go ahead.
We have five key takeaways that we'd like to review with you today. Our first is that our learners need help getting through our application and enrollment pipeline. We saw that many are struggling with this process. There are several steps. And we are really pausing and making an effort to prioritize in the next 30 days to really fine-tune this process with early outreach, early success coaching and interventions, testing the efficacy of those, identifying these barriers, and ensuring that our processes and automation of drip campaigns and emails are in place at the right time serving our students.
It's really important to note that we are looking at a population who are unfamiliar with the education system. That's who we're trying to get into the pipe, into our pipeline. So we have to, you know, walk them through these steps and make it as easy as possible. And if you look at through the learner portal presentation, you'll see some of the ways that we've done that.
Our next key takeaway is that social media is really the primary way that we're reaching our audience. We are targeting potential adult learners who are over the age of 25. We're very careful not to compete with our fellow community colleges. They are across the state in both urban and rural communities and hold a high school diploma or GED.
So social media is one of the best ways where we can actually find individuals who are non-degreed. That information is available. And as part of that, there are methods of driving the cost down for that. And one of those ways is to use our own data. So when we have people who come into CalBright and they apply or they get enrolled, we can use that data to actually do things called look-alike modeling and custom audiences. These are specialized ways that we can bring down costs. We're also looking at, if you look at, on the other side, there's a video ad. This is not new news. Video ads do pretty well. But then it tells us, you know, we have an opportunity here to do a little bit of investment in video in order to kind of do something that's a little bit more successful price-wise.
Our next key takeaway is that our audience is mobile-first. We are really pursuing, making a priority of building a brand that's for all people. We truly recognize our need to design mobile-first, recognizing that the Latinx community over-indexes on mobile use. We often see that in low-income populations, the mobile phone is often the only device in the household. So we're truly marketing with that in mind. One of the long-term goals of our R and B lab will be to investigate the option, having an app that our students will be able to use and access their coursework. We really definitely do try to design with mobile as a top priority.
And if you want to have a little bit of a reference, the industry that I worked in before was finance. Here, you're seeing 52% of our website traffic coming from mobile. There, it was 30. So that's a significant difference.
Our next key takeaway is that ad spend is truly driving our website traffic. We ran radio spots in multiple markets listed here, covering both urban and rural areas on both terrestrial and web platforms. Our ads are sticky, and our call-to-action was that they visit a dedicated landing page of calbright.org/hart. As effective as radio's been to reach our target populations in these specific markets, especially both online and offline, we acknowledge that radio is in fact very expensive.
So if you're taking a look at the chart, what it's showing is the overall traffic coming from these six, these six cities to the website when no other advertising is running. At this point, there's no other digital ads that are running. So you can see that there is a correlation there between running radio ads and traffic to the website. But because of this, we're also acknowledging, if you want to move to this next slide, Ariselli, that we need to find more cost-effective methods of marketing to this population. Ad spend can't be the only way. We do want to make sure that we're driving traffic to our website and driving enrollees from other more cost-effective methods. So we're looking at other, all opportunities out there to really stretch what we're doing.
Our final key takeaway is that competition from online for-profits, as I mentioned, is greater than we expected. We found the most success was when we did our community outreach events. Since we didn't have a very strong brand, when we were positioned in front of the community directly, those efforts were, had the greatest impact. We were able to speak to prospective students and multi-generational families, letting them know that our programs are free and an opportunity to close the equity gap, communicating that point to them in a very authentic and caring way. And as we discussed earlier regarding the PRFP, we recognize that for-profit colleges are targeting these populations with much greater ad spend than we can compete with. So it's really important for us to do this work in underserved communities. Since a lot of this work was done prior to COVID, this is going to be the work of Census to really evaluate what the next phase of work will look like. And we also have done a webinar recently with the addition of our new community outreach director, Raul Sarabia. And he's also making very personal, one-on-one outreach to CBO leaders that we are wanting to partner with.
Listening to students is the most, or potential learners, is the most authentic way that we can get information. But we're using that information to kind of expand our measurement. So what we want to look at is, what is the awareness and consideration, particularly not just for CalBright, but for the community colleges as a whole? How do, how does this particular population view community college education, CalBright education in comparison with well-known for-profits that have already been immersed in their communities? So that's something that we're going to be tracking from now on going forward. So many of you have talked about this already. No one can predict what's going to happen after COVID. But we recognize that we are in a pivotal moment for education. There are some things from 2008 that we can learn from. I think, you know, this has been mentioned before. We had the people who had lost their jobs were entering into the education market. We had people entering into community college system and for-profit institutions. These were mainly adult learners. And what happened in 2008 was because of predatory practices, because of the legislative atmosphere around lending, there was just too much money that was borrowed. And you know what? We can do, we can do a lot better. I think this is what CalBright is here to do. And I've also, you know, had the opportunity to spend a lot of time thinking about education in general. A lot of us are managing our children's education at home. We have now, you know, something different from 2008, is we have Zoom and Google Chrome and Amazon as part of, you know, what we look at, you know, companies that we're looking at that are delivering education. We're in a very different environment. And this is a pivotal moment for education as we are asking ourselves these fundamental questions. And I believe, Ariselli, if you want to move to the next slide, is that the way that we prove our value is by upscaling those workers who are going to be hitting the market right now, who are now unemployed or furloughed, or have some general job insecurity that may have actually existed before COVID-19, but now have been exasperated by COVID-19. So right now, what we're doing is we're undertaking, as Ariselli said, a new set of research, looking specifically at the environment after COVID-19, so that we can align our marketing strategies to what is happening now. There are some things that we can take from our previous research that's been done. Ariselli, if you want to move to the next slide. One is refining our market segments. Ariselli, do you want to talk about this a little bit?
We're going to have to speed this up so that we can get to board member questions.
Okay, I think we're almost done. You want to quickly?
I'm going to skip down to our, how we're going to be refining our strategy moving forward.
Yeah. So the only thing to take from this slide is that one of the, there's one part of the segment that is, that we're going to refocus on. We had originally thought there were a future target, but we're thinking a particular target is transactional skill builders who weren't really interested in education but may now have lost their jobs. And we'll be looking to us for very specific transactional skill building, which is specifically to get to the next, next job or the next opportunity. Our business, we are undergoing now research which has three main objectives. One is just to look at community colleges as an alternative to online for-profits and to really judge where we are in that spectrum. Second is to increase the participation from employers. We're actually going to be doing a second set of research that is specific to employers. And then finally, just, you know, how do we reduce the cost of attracting and enrolling students? There are, there is a set of quantitative work that's going to be done, and also qualitative work that's going to be done, along with getting as much syndicated information that we can possibly get our hands on. So this is going to be completely comprehensive and the best that we can possibly do right now.
I'll just also mention that, as has come up in previous meetings, we'll also be exploring the potential for marketing in other languages and determine how to do so effectively to reach our population, especially in multi-generational households with both native and English speakers.
One of the key ways that we can reduce spend is by having some additions to CalBright websites. CalBright's website, we are trying to do its position, CalBright, almost like the forester of community college education, where we can take the information that we have, the research that we're doing, a lot of the things that were talked about today, and make that available to everyone. Our goal for learners is for them to be able to make better decisions about their job training and their prospects. And our goal for employers is for them to understand the functional skill sets that they need for their org, similar to, you know, what we talked about with opportunity at work. And we'll get this information with what we already have, starting with faculty, the research that we're doing, our internal teams, and any State of California data. Our hope is not just to reduce costs, but also, more importantly, to lift the CalBright brand and the brand of the California Community Colleges as a whole.
Okay, thank you very much.
Go ahead, Member Shaw.
Yeah. A couple, how many students do we have now?
We have 523 in our enrollment right now.
Okay. Now, you mentioned earlier that you thought that radio was too expensive, but it's my experience that particularly in the Latino and Black communities, that's the best way you communicate with potential students.
Yeah. And we're not talking about eliminating radio. We're talking about maximizing the potential of radio. So how do we manage our costs on the existing mediums that have been proven to be effective and supplement that with what, how we need to connect to additional ways for us to connect to different communities?
What are the other ways? It's been my experience, either radio or direct contact.
So we, those are both there. So we have radio and outreach. And then, as you can see, we were actually using radio to drive traffic to the website. So there's a couple things. One is, we need to actually get people through the pipeline faster. So when they come to our website, they need to get the right information there, the right information that's going to convince them to actually enroll. We don't want people just coming to the website and not enrolling or not applying. So we want to kind of construct some of that down. The second is to extend the, what we're doing with radio with other types of advertising, marketing. Taylor will be working on PR and community outreach. You want something that's kind of cohesive and holistic, so that you can develop a larger sort of brand image, and people will be talking about it amongst themselves.
And just to add on that, Valerie, it's completely, that you're right on the money there with direct contact. That's why the work that Mercury will be doing is so important, because their work with the Census is really the same kind of work that we want to be doing. It's reaching folks that are difficult to reach through traditional means.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I have a question. Are you buying ads on Facebook? And sorry if you said that, but are you actually buying Facebook ads?
Yes.
We have previously, we're currently, I'm sorry, we had previously, we currently paused our ad spend for the moment, as many of you participated in a stakeholder interview. The work of Census is really going to be to take a retrospective look at the work that we've done already with our digital ads, and then help us shape what's going to be happening moving forward once they do another round of market research, to really evaluate the difference now in the climate that we're in post-COVID.
President Epstein?
Yes. Go ahead.
What's been the best advertisement? What's been the best bang for your buck?
Good question.
As we showed in a few slides, we have the best performing ad is the one that has a video. And in the PDF, that's in the board doc, you can actually click the link and view that ad. But that's been the highest performing ad that we've seen to date.
And that was on Facebook, correct?
Correct. We also shared it on Instagram. We found that sharing the same assets on multiple places are allowing our students to have a seamless experience regardless of whatever medium they're on.
Any other questions? Well, thank you very much. That was an interesting presentation. And that leads us to the last item on our agenda, which is public forum. Is there anybody who has signed up to speak at the public forum?
No, there's not.
With that, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.